All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Orange County School Board's work session, which has been scheduled today for the purpose of discussing the superintendent search. We had originally scheduled a 10:00 a.m. portion of the work session to review proposed revisions to four of our school board policies: IJ, IJL, IMB, and KEC was postponed pending further guidance from the Florida Department of Education regarding related legislation. We're now ready to discuss the superintendent search, which was advertised to start at 1:00 p.m. It's just a few minutes past. The public will not have an opportunity to participate in this work session because this is not a regularly scheduled school board meeting. No action will be taken, and there will be no pre-agenda period in which we would normally take public comments on germane topics that are related to the work of the school board. Today, the board has the opportunity to work with staff and the FSBA to discuss the process of selecting a school board or a superintendent. Thank you so much for joining us here this afternoon. I'm going to take a quick roll call. Let me begin with Member Gallo. Member Gallo, are you with us? I believe Member Gallo will be joining us. We'll check back with her in just a little bit. Member Lopez.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Let me try again. Member Gallo. All right, we will come back to Member Gallo. You can hear. All right. We're having some technical difficulty. She is trying to tune in, or she is tuned in, but we're not hearing her. So, like I said, we'll come back one more time. Member Lopez has already indicated she's here. I'm so sorry, Member Lopez. I gave you a chance to change that morning, didn't I? Member Cobert.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Good afternoon, Member Cobert. Member Gould.
Present.
Member Felder.
This warm Tuesday, Chair, I'm here.
Thank you, ma'am. Member Castredal.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Good afternoon. Vice Chair Byrd.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Thank you so much for joining us, Vice Chair Byrd. And we're going to try one more time. Member Gallo.
I'm here, Madam Chair.
There we go. We hear your voice. Wonderful. Thank you for joining us. All right, with that, we are going to begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm sorry, with the Pledge of Allegiance, Moment of Silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, if you care to join us. And now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
............................................................
All right, I'm going to remind my fellow board members and our guests that if you're speaking into the mic, remember, they're very sensitive, so try to speak directly into the mic so that our viewing public can hear you as well. Dr. Bridget, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair Jacobs. Board members, this afternoon, with the assistance of the Florida School Boards Association, FSBA, the board will discuss and identify from the three semifinalists, the finalists, as well as discuss the collective and individual interview process and review the timeline. Andrea, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Well, board members, the last time we were together, you selected three semifinalists. Since that time, you have asked them some additional questions to gather some additional information, and you've received their responses in both written and video form. So today, what I'm going to ask you to do is to let me know, and we'll work through this conversation. You have three semifinalists. Which of those three would you like to see come in for a face-to-face interview? So, given the additional information that you have, you can tell me all three, you can tell me whatever number you want, but let's find out from each of you who you would like to see come in for a face-to-face interview, so we can have some discussion. We'll see where there's, just like before, there may be one or two that have great agreement, some that might not, and then we'll determine who this board wants to bring in for a face-to-face interview. Is that right? Yes, ma'am? So how, would you like me to call on the people, or would you like to call on the board members?
I can call on them. I didn't know if you had a plan for how to approach this process, but do you want me to ask if...
Some boards, you would go with your normal pattern of who you would normally call on. If one board member wants to volunteer, and you typically would do that, that's fine, too. It can go by district number, however you want to do it, and then I'll just kind of make notes, and we'll see who wants to bring in.
All right. Let me do this first. First, I'll open for any board members that wish to jump in and give a recommendation. You're welcome to chime in. Otherwise, I'm going to take us in order, and that means Member Gallo is going to go first. So, hearing, seeing, nope. Member Gould has punched in. Member Gould, your thoughts?
I really appreciated both the video and the written responses in learning a little bit more about each of the board members, and frankly, it was very revealing to me, and I feel that it really narrowed it down to two qualified candidates at this point. I think, you know, they all have great qualities, but Dr. Vasquez and Dr. Licata, I think, are in a better position and ready to take that superintendent role on. I think Ms., I don't think she was a doctor, was she? A Dr. Espinal is wonderful, but I would see her more right now if she were to come here in a role, in an administrative role, and really get to know the nuances. I don't think she has quite the breadth of experience in the community that I would like to see. I don't think she has the breadth of operational experience that I would like to see yet. So, it was, when I looked at the two, it became very clear to me that we really had two solid prospects to be able to go through to that next level and do a deeper dive with.
All right. Thank you, Member Gould. Member Castredal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also have narrowed it down to two, and they're the same ones, Dr. Gould, or, Miss, Member Gould mentioned, and for similar reasons. The breadth of experience of both Dr. Licata and Dr. Vasquez are much broader than Dr. Espinal, and I could see Dr. Espinal, I mean, I could see a role for her in our district, but I don't think that's what she's looking for. And her background is impressive, and there's lots of success, but this is, the role of superintendent has much broader requirements, more of a CEO, and much more, you need much more understanding of how the whole organization operates, and I don't feel that she has that. But the others, the other two, Dr. Licata and Dr. Vasquez, have that kind of global perspective or big-picture perspective that I think we also need. So, I would support moving those two forward.
Thank you, Member Castredal. I would concur with Member Castredal and Member Gould, but I'm certainly open to other input from other board members. Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also agree with Board Member Gould, Board Member Castredal, and I would love to add that also that I think that the district would be more benefited by the fact that they have somebody from the state that, who also understand the challenges better. So, I think that Licata, Dr. Licata and Dr. Vasquez are also the most qualified at this moment. That's what I think. So, I agree 100% with them.
Thank you, Member Lopez. Member Felder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I listened to the three of you, my colleagues, four of you, some of which I do have some concerns, but I think mine are different. Dr. Espinal, is that how you pronounce her last name? Espinal, thank you. My concern is the length of time it would perhaps take her to familiarize herself with the stakeholders here in Orange County. And, I mean, it's such a change, a very, very, a big change from where the educational experience is where she's from and coming here. And because of where we are globally and statewide, we need a superintendent that can come in and run it because of the situations that we are daily faced with in terms of decisions we have to make as a board in a district. But I certainly saw her having every qualification that I would admire in a superintendent. Looking at Dr. Licata and Dr. Vasquez, they've been here, and I think they would better be able to adjust to the climate. I'm all about going against the grain, and, because I'm that type of person, I do the opposite. However, I don't think we can afford a trial and error. This is just my sincere opinion. We need to start off running and preparing and doing what we need to do, so reluctantly, but because, you know, I'm seeing, and as a teacher, I always want to give that extra, but because we don't have that luxury, we've got to move quickly. I think I would concur with my fellow board members, Dr. Licata and Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you. All right, let's hear from Vice Chair Byrd.
Thank you, Chair. I am going to agree with my board members. I would like to see Dr. Licata and Dr. Vasquez advance to our final position for interviews. As everyone said, I think that they both show a vast knowledge and experience that I think we need in this position. I'd also like to say that both of them, in these additional questions we got, I was very impressed with the fact that both of them really valued building relationships and how important that is to the climate and the overall well-being of the district. So, I think that that's something that really stood out for me from both of those, and for all the other reasons that everyone else has mentioned. Yeah, I am in agreement with Dr. Licata and Dr. Vasquez moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Castredal, did you push a button again, or is this from before? All right, thank you. So, I think we have heard from everyone but Member Gallo and Member Cobert. Either Member Gallo or Member Cobert, would you like to chime in?
I'm ready, Chair.
Member Cobert.
So, I completely agree with the other members of the board that Dr. Vasquez and Dr. Licata are both prepared, qualified, and a good fit for our organization. I agree with Member Lopez that after watching the videos and the written responses, which were clearly beneficial to have both, I'm glad we did that, but I believe this candidate needs to be familiar with Florida education policy and law, which are rapidly changing right now and different from many other areas of the country. As Member Byrd said at our last meeting, we can't afford to have someone learning on the job. Member Felder mentioned that we need someone who is familiar with our stakeholders, so I think that Florida-centric position and familiarity is really important. And both of these candidates showed strength in the areas of innovation and relationship building. So I think we have two good candidates, strong candidates, to move forward, Dr. Vasquez and Dr. Licata. At the same time, I just want to make a note that I think we had two other candidates, including Dr. Licata, who are also a great fit for our organization, and certainly our staff can look at that. But I concur with the other members. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right, and Member Gallo. Member Gallo, are you with us?
I'm trying.
There you are.
I can't unmute. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
I'm having phone issues this morning. Thank you. So, I agree with my fellow board members. I think that we had three great candidates, the two, Dr. Licata and Dr. Vasquez, stood out for the numerous reasons that have already been mentioned, and I would support moving the two forward finalists.
Okay, thank you. At first, I thought you said you disagreed with the board. You're agreeing that we have three strong candidates, but you think that those two are the two that we should move forward. Did that summarize your...
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you for bearing with us through the technology. Okay, so we have an answer.
Yes, ma'am. We have two...
A unanimous answer.
Yes, ma'am. We have a unanimous selection of Dr. Maria Vasquez, who was applicant number 10, Dr. Peter Licata, who is applicant number 14, to be invited to come in for interviews. So, without objection, we're going to move forward with that. I'm going to introduce John Riker to talk you through what a schedule for two finalists will look like.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Chair Jacobs, members of the board. In being prepared for the possibilities for two folks to come in for interview, I have prepared a sample for two. If I could pass that out, please?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Or should I take a picture and send it to others? Do they get this? I'll take a picture and send it to others.
To address kind of this sample interview for two finalists, of course, some of the details for the candidates who are not being interviewed, I will certainly kind of refine that with Dr. Williams over the next couple of days, but with two persons coming in for onsite interviews, I kept the starting time at 9:00, as previously discussed with the last schedule. So, as this falls out, from 9:00 to 10:30 on Tuesday, the 21st, the board would interview finalist A. Then, there would be a 30-minute break. I think there was some discussion at our last meeting that the board would like a little time between these interviews to kind of take notes and summarize for themselves. Then at 11:00 to 12:30, the board would interview finalist B, and that would wrap up at 12:30. That really would kind of end the interview sessions for that morning for the board, and then we, in talking with Dr. Williams, we have kind of decided to eliminate the dinner for the finalist with two to three finalists coming in. We have selected, Dr. Williams has obtained the Marriott across the street for the hotel for them, so after these interviews, they can have a quick lunch with us here, or maybe go over back to the hotel and have the afternoon to kind of prepare for the meet and greet that evening of June 21st from 6:00 to 7:30 here at the Blocker Center. The concept for that evening, just so you'll know in case you get questions, is we would start at 6:00 with the finalist coming into this room. Any members of the public who would come to participate in the meet and greet would come into our boardroom here. We would then bring in finalist A for that finalist to give a brief introduction of him or herself, and then Ms. Messina would ask that finalist or that individual two to three questions, general questions, just so the public can get a feel for how they respond to a couple of questions. We would then ask finalist A to exit this room. Finalist B would come in, have two to three minutes for introduction of him or herself, and then respond to two or three questions. After that session, then, we would, in working with Dr. Williams, I think there are two rooms in the back of the area here where we would have finalist A go, and finalist B go to the other conference room, big room, and then the public can kind of mingle between those two candidates, spend some time with each candidate, ask them a few questions. We also are going to have prepared at the end of that evening access for those participants who come in from the public to access a QR code, and they can provide their input for each candidate back to the board through this process that will work out with a QR code. They'll be asked to kind of give the strengths of each candidate, the public's, the individual public member's thoughts on the strengths of each candidate, and any questions they might have of each candidate. That will kind of be compiled at the end of that evening, the next morning, and then sent to the board for your review to get a feel from the public of what some of their thoughts were on those candidates. Then, moving to Wednesday, June 22nd, it's a little stuff explanatory, but we'll begin at 9:00 that morning, and you can see as each individual board member would have their times to interview the two candidates. We did discuss at the last meeting, those one-on-ones being 30 to 45 minutes, 30 or 45 minutes, and I think the board decided on 45 minutes, but, and that's why I kept that at 45 minutes at this time, unless there's any discussion about that issue, this is kind of an overall summary of our schedule for those two days.
All right, we have a question from Member Gould.
The reception was put on our calendars for the Tuesday night. Is that something you would recommend we come to or actually don't come to? Because it...
So it has been, I think, very beneficial for Board members to experience that part of the process. So then could we move the meetings from morning to afternoon with them? If my fellow Board members would be amenable to that, because for some of us, it's, no, no, for Tuesday, we'd have to be here at 9:00 in the morning and then back at 6:00. And for some of us who don't work out of this building, primarily, that's challenging. Still giving them some time, obviously, to, at least an hour to get ready, but rather than doing the meetings in the morning, maybe we could do 1 to 3 or something like that, like we do our work session.
It certainly is. I mean, we certainly can do that. Maybe we begin at 1:00, and that would put us finishing up about, what, 4:35?
And still give them an hour and a half to...
An hour or a half, yes, ma'am.
Refresh. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Right, because we have the whole day blocked, but if we come in the morning and then there's... I like to be able to multitask.
That makes sense.
Yes, Chair Jacobs, if the Board would like to do that, then certainly I can provide Dr. Williams with a modified schedule later this afternoon, and then we can kind of shoot that back out to the Board members electronically through her process. But I'll certainly modify this to begin at 1:00. And that should put us finishing up about 4:30 or 5:00.
Perfect. Perfect. Let's do that.
Very good.
No objection? Good idea.
Okay. And then our Wednesday schedule for your one-on-ones, is there any conflict that any Board member has with that for those couple of hours? Thank you, Chair Jacobs. And I will modify the schedule, get it to Dr. Williams, and we'll get it back out to the members. Thank you so much.
Trade which one? Okay, I think we have a trade.
Yep.
Okay, right.
Time slots for Wednesday.
So Member Gould and Chair Jacobs are just switching.
Yes, and it's an even trade, so there's no gift laws that need to be reported.
No disclosure for this.
All right, we're done.
Thank you very much. John is the master.
Trading period has closed.
Trading period's gone. John is the master at these schedules, so he will definitely get that done. We're looking forward to the 21st and 22nd, and then make sure your calendar is set for the 28th, because at 4:45 PM, the Board selects the next superintendent. So I know you have that on your calendar also, a very important date.
And what time is that on the 28th?
4:45 PM it's set up.
Okay, and can we talk just for a moment about that?
Sure.
So that is an open public hearing, so we will be taking public comment on that. How's that gone in the past? Not that we have a choice, I recognize that, I'm just curious.
It's gone extremely well.
Huh?
It's gone extremely well. We haven't had...
You stick to your normal three minutes? Have you...
Yeah.
And I don't know that we ever adopted any changes, Amy, to our policy, so I think it's however many speakers we have.
We've had, in different districts, certainly people will come up and give their opinions. Sometimes representative employee groups will, sometimes outside citizen groups will. You may find some of the citizens that were on your advisory committee will come in. But they're all, we've never experienced anything other than a respectful declaration of support.
Okay. Very good.
And then Andrea, that occurs, right, and we will have a script for the Board, a draft script, and a whole process laid out for the Board should they decide to use that.
Yes, that'd be helpful, to have that ahead of time, if you wouldn't mind.
Definitely will have that, and we'll talk about that. And Andrea's going to talk a little bit about the process for our interviews.
Before that, if I could, if I could call on Member Felder, because I cut her off and I just realized she has a question. Let me...
And it'll probably get answered later on, I don't know, but I am happy that it is an open, I'm sorry, is an open forum for the community to come in. I think it's important. Again, we've always, even at the beginning of this process, we've continued to reiterate that we wanted to be authentic and we wanted to be transparent, and I think we are working to that. So I am so much in favor of allowing our community to come in, and I don't doubt that we will have any disrespect. I don't believe that we will, but we know what to do if we do, but I don't think that's going to happen. And I'm hoping that if people are listening, that they will take advantage and ask those questions so that, and then we, as a Board, can see how the applicants can handle questions and, you know, and be able to respond and what that does and how they connect with the community. So I'm hoping that people will come, and we need to be prepared to stay as long as it takes, because this is important. This is just my opinion. I think it's important because we're making a major decision, and I don't want to rush through that part of it. So thank you for giving us that option. We need that. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think your superintendent search portal and your job that your team has done here has been amazing. I think it's one of the best that we've seen, because everything is available to the public, and I know we've heard a lot of positive about the availability of information on the entire search. One of the things that's extremely important about the interview process before the Board is the process we like to use for Board members asking questions. And I'd like Andrea to talk a little bit about that process, because we like the Board to essentially ask the same questions to both of the candidates. So Andrea's going to talk a little bit about how we're going to get to that point.
And can we clarify, are you talking about for the one-on-one interviews?
No, this is just for the general public interviews. What's really nice is having the one-on-ones after that. If there's other information that you didn't get or you need to get follow-up on, you can get that during the one-on-one interview. So that's why we like to have the Board interviews first.
So Tuesday will be the full Board public interview, and each one of the applicants, now, I think, starting at 1:00, is that what we said? Starting at 1:00, the first applicant, who is number 10, Dr. Vasquez, will be first. She'll come in, she'll have a seat up here, and the Board will be seated, as the Board corporate typically is during a meeting. So what we'll do is, if it's okay with the Board, we'll work again with Ms. Dr. Williams, and we'll go through the same six categories that you have in your strategic plan, but we'll also be adding two additional categories, because with eight Board members, we want each of you to have an opportunity, you saw that, I saw seven, eight Board members, yeah. We want each of you to have an opportunity to ask some questions. So the two additional categories will be general leadership and Board Superintendent relationship. So those two, plus the six categories from your strategic plan, if each one of you will take one of them, and we'll work with Dr. Williams to figure out who's going to get which category again. What I will do, and this will happen next week, because I think you all know when we leave here, I'm headed over to our conference in Tampa, next week, first thing, I'll provide each of you with a bank of questions in your strategic area, 15 to 25 questions. You don't have to necessarily use the questions that I give you, but they're to kind of get your mind thinking about the types of questions you might want to ask in the public interview. I'm going to ask each of you to select up to four questions, and you'll tell us which four questions you're going to ask. We then compile all of the questions sort of in a worksheet format, so that you have a little packet for each of the applications, each of the finalists, where you can write their comments as they're responding. So you'll have a sheet that has, whoever gets the high expectations for student learning category, for example, you'll have those four questions written out, so you can put notes when somebody asks them, and then the same for the social and emotional well-being and all of that. You'll have a little worksheet to work through to take notes. That's how we will run the public interview. It will be timed, each Board member, based on an hour and a half. So each Board member will get approximately seven minutes. There'll be a little time for an introductory statement. We'll have a whole script written out for you. As soon as I get each question in each of those categories, the script will be there. You'll all get it far before Tuesday, so you'll know kind of how it's going to run. Then I will be here, John and Bill will be here, and we'll keep you on time. Of course, you have timing mechanisms yourselves, but we'll keep it moving so that both candidates deserve to have the same questions, the same time, and the questions asked from the same people, so that then your community can compare apples to apples. They'll know this, they got a question, they both got the same question, here's how each one answered them. So there's a comparative ability there. Those public interviews, just like your normal meetings, will be recorded, so people can watch them and provide input back to the Board as they see fit. When they come in for the public meet and greet that evening, as Bill and John said, we'll have a little QR code where they can submit, it's kind of a survey mechanism. We'll get that to you before, it'll be early, but it'll be before the morning interviews the next day, the one-on-ones. Because if you want to use some of the feedback from the citizens that night, then you have it when you're doing your one-on-one interviews. For the one-on-one interviews, what I will provide for you is a bank of about, I think I have about 170 different questions now in all the different categories, and you can pull from our questions or not, as you see fit, but I want to give you enough that you have things to work from if you need them during the one-on-ones. I will also tell you, the finalists will come into the one-on-ones, and they're going to have some questions for you that they want to know more information about. They may even have some materials that they want to share with you and go over. So that time, that 45 minutes, is going to go really quickly, but just like the written and video responses that you received last week, you will find those one-on-one sessions to be extraordinarily helpful in making your decision. So our goal is to provide you as many different types of opportunities to see these applicants so that you have a full range of their experiences to be able to base your decision on, on the 28th. You'll have had the public interview, which is pretty formal. You'll have had the citizen meet and greet, which is kind of informal. You'll have the one-on-ones, you had the video, you had the written. So all of that will come together for you after interview week and then when you make your final decision. So are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Yes, let's pause for questions there. So Member Felder, you stepped out, but your button is pushed, so I don't know if you have questions on what was just covered or not.
Well, thank you.
If not, you might pick up your question.
Something I want to say.
Okay.
I am happy that you will provide us with a bank of questions, because even though you think you know what to ask people, sometime you, I don't want to waste my 45 minutes, and trust me, I will not waste mine, but I'm happy that you've given us also an option to look at that, because even looking at the interviews, I found myself, I came back up here last night and stayed about 10:00, because I kept looking at the videos over and over again, because I was pulling questions based on what they were telling me, that they had experience, what they were doing, and so I had some other questions. So I'm glad that you've given us the option. Plus, having that bank of questions probably can help us form our questions in the right way, so there won't be any problem with bias, you understand? And the candidates both can perceive and know that we've been fair across the Board. So thank you for giving us that option. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, our Board Chair.
Absolutely. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Mine's pretty easy. I just was, I overheard you saying that you and Member Gould were swapping out in the personal interviews, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to let Bridget know that we need to probably change room assignments, because, you know, Member Gould and I are right next door to each other, and we can hear everything in each other's room. So we obviously don't want to do those two together next to each other. So, you know, I don't know if we want to do the conference room upstairs or something instead of one of our offices for that.
Good thing to point out.
That was my one comment. And then the other one, I was, while I totally agree with moving the time, my only concern with that is that if the public wants to watch these interviews, which I believe that they will, and they want to come to the meet and greet, it doesn't leave very much time for them to travel from home where they're watching the interviews, or I guess they could, is the boardroom going to be open if people want to come into the boardroom during that time, or is it just they can watch it, the public can watch it live?
Meeting, right, they can watch it.
Okay. I was just going to say then, I guess that's different, because I was going to say if people are watching the interviews at home, it doesn't leave much time to travel for the meet and greet, and then if we wanted to get input from the interviews and input from the meet and greet from them that night for our interviews, for our meetings the next day, it doesn't allow a lot of time. So that was my only concern there, but otherwise, I'm good with everything else.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Riker did just sketch out what the time would look like, and it appears if you start at 1:00, and we do an hour and a half, 30-minute break, hour and a half, it would be 4:30 when those end.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, that's better. Thank you.
So I have a number, I have a couple of questions. I want to make sure I'm understanding this. You're going to have a bank of questions. You're going to share those bank of questions with us, and they're going to be grouped by the strategic plan goals as well as two others, and you're going to decide who you're sending them to.
We're going to work with Dr. Williams on that.
Okay. And then each one of us will get, say, 10 or 15 or 20 questions to choose from, and we're going to pick our favorite four to choose from. Okay, I got that part, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then if there's a question that doesn't get asked, then those are the questions that we'll ask in our private interviews, but that won't get asked publicly.
Correct. Right, including questions like the ones that Ms. Felder said she started thinking based on...
Yes.
You can ask questions like that in your one-on-one as well.
Okay.
And when there's answers to questions that are in the public meeting, if there's some follow-up that you're interested in.
So let me, yeah, and so that's the next question, follow-up. Is the follow-up restricted to the person who asked the question?
We, in order to get each applicant with an hour and a half, we have very kind of strict time constraints. So each Board member will get, and I have to work it out exactly, because there are eight of you, I think it's seven minutes per category, okay? So if you finish your category, but you have an additional question and you have a little time, you could ask a follow-up from something somebody else said.
Seven minutes with question and answer?
Yes, ma'am.
So how much time do they have to answer?
Well, part of the script actually says at the very beginning, and it guides the person and says, each category of question, each Board member's prepared to ask up to four questions. You have so many minutes, and I have to work out the time to make sure I'm correct, you have, call it seven minutes, maybe eight, per category. So that kind of puts them on notice to be succinct in their answers. If they go on and on and on, you may only get to one question or two questions. If they are succinct, you might get through all four. But each Board member, in order for each Board member to have their time with their category, we have to stick to the time limit.
It's 90 minutes.
It's nine minutes per category.
90 minutes, nine minutes, 11 minutes per, 11 minutes per.
Well, but that's without the introduction and conclusion. So there's a little bit of time at the end where you'll tell the applicant, do they have any concluding statements?
Is the follow-up restricted to the person who asked the question?
We, in order to get each applicant with an hour and a half, we have very kind of strict time constraints. So each board member will get, and I have to work it out exactly, because there are eight of you, I think it's seven minutes per category, okay? So if you finish your category, but you have an additional question and you have a little time, you could ask a follow-up from something somebody else said.
Seven minutes with question and answer?
Yes, ma'am.
So how much time do they have to answer?
Well, part of the script actually says at the very beginning, and it guides the person and says, each category of question, each board member's prepared to ask up to four questions. You have so many minutes, and I have to work out the time to make sure I'm correct. You have, call it seven minutes, maybe eight, per category. So that kind of puts them on notice to be succinct in their answers. If they go on and on and on, you may only get to one question or two questions. If they are succinct, you might get through all four. But each board member, in order for each board member to have their time with their category, we have to stick to the time limit.
It's 90 minutes.
It's nine minutes per category.
Nine minutes, nine, 11 minutes per, 11 minutes per.
Well, but that's without the introduction and conclusion. So there's a little bit of time at the end, where you'll tell the applicant, do they have any concluding statements? So it might be that they didn't finish an answer that they wanted to finish, or something like that. They could put that in their concluding statement.
So I heard some, and I didn't hear it very well, but I could hear some chatter about how much time. So my fear is, being more familiar with debates than with this process, that you, a board member could spend seven minutes asking four questions.
I'd be surprised if that happened.
Well, hopefully not, because you're going to write them more concisely than that.
Yes, ma'am.
But that seven minutes is asking and answering.
That's correct. But it's more like 10-ish than seven.
Okay.
But I can promise you, you know, we've done this in 20 districts.
Yeah, I know.
It runs smoothly, which is why.
And I promise you, I, it's still my nature, always to think about what can go wrong.
As it should be, as the chair for sure.
I have been in one agency where we were selecting a, the head of the agency, and it did not go, the questions that came from the public were not professional, and they were extremely embarrassing. So that's why I asked the question about the questions from the public. Have you ever had a situation, only because I've been in that situation.
Okay, so when you said questions from the public, I misunderstood what you said.
I'm on two different things. Earlier, I had mentioned to you, have you ever had any uncomfortable situations with questions from the public, and you've said, no, it's always gone well.
I thought you were talking about input from the public. We don't have, we don't have an opportunity for the public to be asking the applicant's questions, except for at the evening event. Is that what you're now referring to?
Right. So when they're coming up and speaking, their speaking is simply to opine what their opinion is of someone.
Yes.
Fortunately, their opinion may include, could theoretically include, information that is not factually validated and backed up, but that's what they're supposed to be doing, is just giving us their input.
Citizen input, correct. They're not asking questions of the applicants, no, ma'am.
Okay. And there's no opportunity for the applicant, my job is to make sure that they understand that, and to make sure that if they attempt to direct a question to the applicant, the applicant is not going to be responding to questions. This is just for information purposes only.
They're only going to be sitting in the audience. When we're doing the public interview, it is the board.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the public. I've gone to the, I'm sorry, I've gone to the public hearing now.
The hearing, on the 28th.
Oh, on the 28th, the applicants may not even be here.
They're not going to be here, right.
Typically, we recommend that they don't come, because it.
Now, that's a really good idea.
Right. They're not here, right.
Yeah. That's the piece I think I was not catching.
Okay, so.
So those citizens are speaking to the board, just like any other board meeting, when you have citizen input and people come up and they have their three minutes, it's no different.
Okay, I got it. Think I understand it. Member, Vice Chair Byrd, questions?
Oh, no, you already got me, Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Member Lopez, and then I'll come back to Member Felder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question with the QR code questions. So those questions will be included in the bank that you will be submitted the next day, or?
The QR code is simply a vehicle for the citizens to provide input. There are no questions other than, what are the strengths of, what strengths do you see in this applicant? What questions do you still have? Those are the only questions that are related to the QR code. So then you, as the person who's going to be doing the interviewing the next day, all of the information that comes in off that QR code will present itself like a survey, you've seen survey summaries. And so you'll see all of the strengths that all of the people saw in each of the applicants, and you'll see all of the questions that they still have. So you could use that if you choose to, but you may not choose to. As well as, I heard Vice Chair Byrd talk about people wanting to watch the interviews. We can leave the QR code open for a day or two to continue. We can't give you all of that before you do your one-on-ones, but we can certainly give you what's available on the morning of the one-on-ones, and then wait an additional 24 hours for people to continue to watch and provide additional feedback, if that's something you want us to do.
Oh, perfect. I like that. And also about the meet and greet, about that logistic, you know, how many people, where is going to, where is going to be the event? Is it going to be here?
Yes, it'll be here.
How many peoples are allowed to participate?
It's a public event. So think of it almost like a wedding reception line, okay? So originally, we're going to have, in the center here, because I think we talked about it being video, that part was going to be on video, or no? I can't remember. I think that part's going to be aired. So they will initially come in, they'll have a few minutes to introduce themselves to the crowd. I'll ask them one or two less formal questions than the ones you will have asked earlier in the day, so people can kind of see them with more of a conversational interaction. Applicant one leaves, applicant two comes in, same thing, introduces himself, does a little informal thing. Then each of them goes to the two rooms that are identified in the back over there. Citizens can go in and out. It's really a, when we say meet and greet, it's not designed for people to corner the applicant. It's to say, hello, I have a question, can you answer my quick question? Kind of a little line forms at each of the applicants. We, the three of us, kind of keep the people moving, because it's, this is not the time for the citizens to come in and try to corner somebody. This is the time for true, try to get as many citizens to be able to meet these applicants as possible.
So it will be in this room? We will be here?
It will be in this room, as well as two rooms. Dr. Williams, I don't know what you call those rooms.
For Member Lopez, we will start out in here, in the boardroom, and the two applicants will actually be in a position to where they will be able to say a few words. Once that is done, the two rooms that are in the back, they will at that point relocate to the two rooms that are in the back. And at that point, those that are here that would like to talk with them will have an opportunity to say, hello, how are you doing? Ask a few questions, things like that. We will also have food in the lobby area. So there are some folks that may, that may decide not to go in the back, but just hang out in the lobby area for a few minutes. So that's the process.
So I think that we might have to make prearrangements with the, with all the security and safety that we used to have during school board meetings.
And we will work on that, definitely.
Thank you.
Board Member Lopez, think of it as mingling.
Yes, exactly.
It's a mingling event.
Yes, because mingling during this time, we have to take care of that.
And we can certainly require masks, if that's what you want. We can certainly require distancing, whatever.
I was thinking that, you know, sometimes we have people that take advantage of certain events.
Yes.
To do something else. And, you know, and safety, I think for us, is very important.
Yes, ma'am. We're very familiar with people with those motives.
Thank you.
Which is why we try to stay very close to the applicants, we try to keep people moving, you know, we say, thank you so much for asking, but need to move on. If we need to get securities assistance, we'll absolutely do that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Bring the dog. Go, go. Member Felder.
Most of what has been discussed kind of answers my questions, but, you know, if there are community members who have some direct, you know, questions and all, they can do that to us, you know? They don't have to corner the applicants, because, they don't need to do that, because we're the ones going to make the ultimate decision. So whatever feedback or backlash, whatever, it needs to come to us, because we serve at the pleasure of the community, of our constituents. So ask us, you know, whatever it is, you've got some concerns, you know, you can ask us, so that the applicants won't feel, and I don't think that they will, feel so cornered, but, I mean, you need to, you need to understand that people are going to ask questions. They are going to do that. You need to be prepared for that, as part of the job. However, I don't believe that, I think we can, you know, any issues, come to us, say to us, and as a board, we can address it, so neither of our applicants will feel cornered. But I like the fact that it is like a meet and greet, talk, you know, get to know them, and I like the fact that they can come in and hear the interaction, some of the things that they'll be saying, so they can see or hear how they deal with, you know, some of the issues that we have here. So thank you for that. That's going to, that's going to work out fine. Thank you.
Just another comment on that, too. If we see an awkward situation, and there's a question that is a concern, we'll intervene. And in the past, you know, I have said, what is your name, sir? And I've written down their name. We'll get back with you, and I will get with Dr. Williams, and we'll get an answer to you. You know, the candidate may not have that information right now, so we always do that. Also, board members are really not expected to sit at the dais at all. They're mingling and they're out at the meet and greet, throughout the whole process.
Right. Dr. Williams, can you clarify when you said, I understand that they're going to start in here, and they're going to make some just introductory remarks? That makes perfect sense. You mentioned the two rooms in the back. Are you literally talking about this space back here? I didn't think so. What rooms are you referring to?
Conference room, I'm sorry, cafe, I'm sorry, conference room E, in the back. We actually have meetings in that back.
Yes.
As well as superintendent's conference room that's in the back.
Okay. So I had, at our last time we discussed this, I was under the impression we were going to use our lobby area.
We will. We will actually have food in the lobby area, in the lobby. So that's where folks, if they, for instance, now that we're moving it from 1:00 to 2:30 for the first candidate, and 3:00 to 4:30 for the second candidate, we'll have food in the lobby, starting, say, at 5:00, 5:15. So if folks are here, or they would like to stay here, they can now enjoy snacks in the lobby area. And once we begin at 6:00, they can actually move into the, into the boardroom.
Okay. So candidates will move into the boardroom, and the public may choose to move into the boardroom, so they can hear what they have to say. And then we open it up to a mix and mingle, and that's going to take place with the two candidates being separated in those two rooms.
That is correct.
Not out in this open area here.
No.
Okay, okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, it's just, yeah, a little different than what I thought we were talking about, but probably, I'm sure you've thought through and come up with the idea that that might be a better way to handle it. So I trust you on that.
Well, thank you.
Yes, I, the only thing I would tell you is, if it was going to be here, somebody turn the air conditioner down, because the last time we had a big gathering in that main area, you all may remember, we were all dying. So I don't want to put the candidates through that. Yeah. All right. Well, it's little things, but you want them to feel comfortable, you want all of us to feel comfortable, you want the public to feel comfortable, so. All right, I think we got a handle on it. Thank you. And so I think one of my biggest question was, if I see a question, and I think we all have this, in that bank of questions, and I feel like that question just has to get asked, but I didn't draw that straw, I draw that straw the next day, and that's part of what I use my time for.
Yes, and in order to keep the full bank of questions, see, because we are very conscious of public records. So you will only be working with me primarily on your category's questions.
Okay.
Until I receive all the questions everyone has, then you will get the full bank.
Makes sense. I'll always have an opportunity to see what's left over.
Correct.
But then that could mean that, Member Lopez drew seven questions, but only got to answer, asked three, I might never know the other four.
Exactly.
Okay.
And again, you, if you can pick your own questions, too.
Yes, absolutely.
She's important, too.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Any other questions about the questions? We're done with the questions? Good. All right. Anything else for us?
It's going to be exciting.
Okay.
And we're looking forward to it.
Okay, there you go. Love that positive attitude. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Dr. Williams, on your end.
I would like to thank FSBA for helping us with this process. And next steps will be candidate 10 and candidate 14 will move forward as finalists.
All right. Excellent.